It hasn't quite come to North Amherst yet, it's just thundering. So I don't know whether it's in the middle, you know, different parts of town sometimes get a storm sooner.
We're just hearing the thunder. I think it might all be north Athena, you guys.
Recording in progress.
We are recording, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. This is the special meeting of the Town Council and the Finance Committee to have a public hearing on the FY twenty five budget. It's Tuesday, May twenty first, and the meeting is due to start, and we're starting on time, more or less, at six thirty. Just so the members of public know, if you're not logged on via, you can get on via Zoom, or you can get on by phone, and the phone number would be three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. Enter the webinar, Athena, you might want to put this up, but it's a webinar ID. It's, it won't be live broadcast by Amherst Media because they're doing a school committee meeting. It's a special meeting of the Town Council, and the open meeting law allows us to conduct this virtually. So my first order of business is to make sure that the members of the Finance Committee can see and be heard and call the Finance Committee meeting in order, because we do have a quorum. And so I will call out the names of the Finance Committee members to make sure they can see and be heard. And Lynn Griesmer then will pick up the other members of the council, but we do have a quorum of the council as well. So Counselor Hanke.
Present.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Alicia Walker.
Here.
Bernie Kubiak. And Matt Holloway.
Present.
Okay Lynn, I think, I think I have hit all the members of the Finance Committee. So I turn it over to you to call the council to order.
Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the May twenty first special Town Council meeting to order at six thirty four. I'm going to call people's names, please let me know that you can hear us and we can hear you. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Pam Rooney? Not yet. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you are. Thank you. And Jennifer Taub.
Present.
And did I miss anybody? No, thank you.
About it. So there is, no, I am chairing the meeting tonight for the Finance Committee because Bob Hegner is unable to attend, so I'm a substitute chair. And everyone can give me a little bit of wiggle room, although Lynn has coached me. There's no chat room for this meeting. If you have a technical issue, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment or ask a question, please raise the right, raise hand button on Zoom. The meeting tonight will start, the special hearing will start with a brief presentation by the Town Manager. Then we will ask for anyone who wants to speak to raise their hand for public comments. The public comments in general will be limited to three minutes, no more than three minutes. But I will take account of everyone who wants to speak. We've scheduled the meeting to go up to two hours. The, as we, you've heard in our council meetings, is residents are free to express their views. The committee is not going to engage in any dialogue. If there's a specific question that can be answered about the budget, we will try to answer those questions. The First Amendment broadly protects individuals' right to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their right to say hateful and offensive things. I'm generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment, unless their level of speech falls within the exception. If a question exists on whether a particular speaker is engaging in unprotected speech, I will defer to the principle of freedom of speech. We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have raised hands. And Athena will help me follow that. So at this point, Paul, I am turning it over to you.
Thank you Kathy, and I think we have a slide deck. So this is a shortened version of what you had already seen when I presented the budget in early May. So this is the budget that was submitted on May first, which is in compliance with the town, with the town charter, next slide. And with anything, I do have thank yous. I really need to thank the budget team that put this together without our finance director. But it'd be Holly Drake, Jen LaFountain, Athena O'Keefe, Sandy Poehler, who all contributed mightily and wholly to creating this budget. So I thank them each. Excuse me. And also to the libraries and schools for delivering their budgets on time. Next slide. So this is a budget for FY twenty five. It's a very big document. It looks like this. But, and it's available online. Everything I show you here is online. It includes five elements, the town budget, the library budget, the elementary schools budget, the regional school district budget, the capital, in the capital improvement program. Those are the things that are under consideration. The other pieces of the town's finances include the community development block grant budget and the Community Preservation Act budget. They are all done separately. The Finance Committee has been reviewing the budget in detail. They've been meeting twice a week. And their charge is to return a recommendation to the Town Council by June fourth. The Town Council has until June thirtieth to approve the budget. Next slide. So the, this is a balanced budget. The key points on the right are the things I want to emphasize. Under the, the Budget Coordinating Group had, in the financial guidelines by the Town Council, asked us to maintain a balanced budget. This budget hit includes a four percent increase for each of the four entities. And note that the Regional School District requested a six percent increase in their budget. And that increase was also approved by three other towns that are part of our region. There's no override expected or requested. We continued to meet our requirements for funding our outstanding liabilities, which is a very important thing for our financial status, which includes meeting our debt payments, our contributions to OPEB, which is our other post-employment benefits, which are the funds that we pay for retirees for their medical benefits and to the pension. We included a multi-year forecast, so people can see what does this budget mean for the out years. And we have protected the reserves, which is really our insurance policy against any downward trends happening. Next slide. So the budget summary, this is a budget summary, again, the four entities are at the top and how four percent looks like to them. And then we have the three things that I just mentioned in terms of what we're contributing. Next slide. The, so actually, this is repeating. The total budget is ninety seven million dollars plus. We, the guidelines have requested that we maintain our capital spending. We maintain the capital spending at ten point five percent of the tax levy because we have been, we are so far behind in maintaining our buildings, and we're paying for that, that lack of attention to our buildings now by the need for replacing so many buildings all in a short timeframe. So maintaining that contribution to the, to capital spending is important so that we can continue to protect our buildings that we already own. And I already talked about the other things. Next slide. So the things that are coming up that we'll be talking about along the way is developing a fiscal stability plan for the school district. We have seen the schools, regional school district especially, but both school districts trending higher than the revenue coming into the town. So I think a really serious conversation needs to be had with, between the town and the school committee and our regional partners to talk about what does this look like going forward? As I mentioned, the aging infrastructure of our buildings, but also, and many people call it the fifth major capital project, our buildings and our roads. Roads and sidewalks are a high priority for the council, and that continues to be a need that the town needs to address. We've been requested to improve our recreational facilities and also try to do more for our seniors. Increasing affordable housing, and there's, we are using ARPA funds to develop a permanent shelter for the unhoused on a piece of property, which is on Main Street from the former VFW site. We have a lot of capital initiatives in play right now, including the library and the schools. And we have two that are poised to move forward, which is the Fire Department and the DPW. The council approved a new rental registration program, and we've added positions for that that are being funded by the new fees implemented to be charged to those who own rental properties. And I also just want to mention that the town is going through an unusual period of high-level leadership changes. So in the town side, it's a police chief, fire chief, finance director. On the schools, it's a superintendent and a middle school principal. At the, you know, the colleges and university, Amherst College and UMass both have new leaders. And, and the chamber and the bid each have new leaders. So there's a lot of leadership change going on in our community, which makes it more challenging to move forward on some of our initiatives. Next slide. And that's, I'm going to conclude my presentation because tonight is really the night for us to listen to the public and for the council to hear the priorities and concerns of the public. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So as, as we call for people to raise their hands for public comments, I want to remind people that this is a hearing on the town budget that Paul has just very briefly presented. And finance is still, as he said, we are still meeting to go over the details of each of these. And so we, we will be making recommendations by the end of this month. There will be time later in a public forum on the capital improvement plan. And there will always be opportunities for comment at the Town Council meeting. The capital improvement plan is a specific set of spending plan that Paul quickly summarized is allocating about ten point five percent of our budget. So at this point, I'd like to ask for those who would like to speak to raise their hands. And we will call on you in order of the hands. And there are, for people who want to know, there are twenty nine people in attendance in the public that we can see. And so far, six people have raised their hand. So eight people. So we, we will go through everyone and with the up to three-minute rule. And Athena will be managing this for me, correct Athena?
Yes, I have my timer ready to go.
Okay, so you can bring the first person into the room.
All right, Jeff Lee, please go ahead.
Thank you. Jeff Lee from South Amherst. Just like to say a few words about library spending. I feel that town leaders have not done a good job of explaining, or maybe you're not even aware that the town's financial commitment to the Jones Library expansion is unprecedented. It's more than fifteen times greater than the town has ever committed to a library capital improvement in the past. The last capital improvement, the nineteen ninety-three addition to the library, which trustees now propose to demolish, was completed with a town commitment of one million dollars, with the remaining four million covered by a library and state grant. The town's commitment to the current renovation expansion would be fifteen point eight million plus nine million in interest payments at a minimum. This represents a quantum shift in how Amherst prioritizes library spending. Remember that the Jones Library is a private nonprofit corporation that has a nine million dollar endowment and a robust fundraising organization in the Friends of the Jones Library, something town departments lack. It's fundraisers who continue to rally their donors to advocate for the project are earning thousands of dollars each month in compensation from the capital campaign. They obviously want the now fifty three million dollar project to continue. They're joined by Fine Gold Alexander Architects, who will be well paid if the project continues. They have billed the town more than one point five million for design work. And that's what, thirty educator salaries? And we just heard at the JLBC meeting that to extend the project another six months will cost the town about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Responsible fiscal management calls for Amherst to regroup and find a more equitable and affordable way to maintain the Jones. Amherst should return to the JCPC process that served the town well for the huge project that was proposed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Athena, we can bring the next person in.
Okay, Allegra Clark, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Allegra Clark. I am resident of District Two. I am a parent of a public school student, and I am talking tonight about the need to fund the regional budget at least six percent. As the Town Manager mentioned, all the regional towns have funded that level. And where are we showing our priorities if we say no? The things that are on the chopping block would be special education services, restorative justice, and guidance counselor positions, world language positions, math positions, a shift in the way departments work, and it would be devastating for our educators and our students. And frankly, it's unacceptable. I know that the Northampton mayor just approved eight point five percent funding increase for their schools. And I would like to see Amherst follow the suit of all the surrounding towns, really, and including the ones in our region. I also wanted to talk a bit about the library project because I do think that with the current bid, it is untenable for us to continue to go forward, especially when we are literally slashing the budget of the schools every year to build a building. So I love the library, and I think that there could be a more reasonable alternative so that it gets repaired while we still focus on moving the other capital projects forward and the schools as well. And finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about the police budget. I am concerned that my tax dollars are going to fund the police after what I saw on May seventh and what has been reported to have happened on May seventh. And whether or not Amherst Police were involved in making arrests, they were involved in transporting students who had been trampled and brutalized by other police forces. So I, one proposal.
restorative justice, and guidance counselor positions, world language positions, math positions, a shift in the way departments work, and it would be devastating for our educators and our students. And frankly, it's unacceptable. I know that the Northampton mayor just approved eight point five percent funding increase for their schools. And I would like to see Amherst follow the suit of all the surrounding towns, really, and including the ones in our region. I also wanted to talk a bit about the library project because I do think that with the current bid, it is untenable for us to continue to go forward, especially when we are literally slashing the budget of the schools every year to build a building. So I love the library, and I think that there could be a more reasonable alternative so that it gets repaired while we still focus on moving the other capital projects forward and the schools as well. And finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about the police budget. I am concerned that my tax dollars are going to fund the police after what I saw on May seventh and what has been reported to have happened on May seventh. And whether or not Amherst Police were involved in making arrests, they were involved in transporting students who had been trampled and brutalized by other police forces. So I, one proposal that I have heard of that I would support would be cutting the police capital budget and instead moving that almost two million dollars there into a project for solar panels at the high school, which would also help the ongoing operating budget of the regional school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Allegra.
Okay, next is Molly.
Hi, my name is Molly Cooksey. I live in Chutesbury. I am an educator at Fort River Elementary School. I'm also in the Coming on This program. And I'm speaking on behalf of our staff of amazing educators. I'd also like to say a big thank you to our Regional School Committee, who has worked so hard with us to try to find some solutions to a lot of the issues that we've been dealing with for more than a year. So I feel very hopeful and excited about what we have to look forward to, but these things can only happen, and we can only look forward to them if we are appropriately funding our schools. I'm very excited to know that Chutesbury, Leverett, where I grew up, Chutesbury where I now live, and Pellon of all approved a six percent increase. It's really not a luxurious amount. It's meeting the bare minimum perhaps, and it's saving some really valuable positions that will improve the quality of life for a lot of our students, particularly the students that are most often affected by being marginalized in society. So as a dual-language teacher, bilingual educator, I really hope that the town will figure out its priorities and choose to protect our world language programs, our special education programs, our guidance programs. I know you hear it all the time, that our students need the support now more than ever after COVID. We say that because it's true. Our students really need this. Our educators really need this. We are trying to scrape ourselves back together and bring Amherst schools into, you know, live up to our expectations of having these amazing public schools. We can't do that without appropriate funding. So please meet the six percent expectation that the other towns have put forward, work with us. And thank you for taking your time.
Thank you, Molly.
Okay, next is Jessie Warren.
Hello, I would just like to second what everyone else has said so far and request that the counselors on this meeting actually like listen to these public comments and maybe address what is suggested and mentioned in them. There were many solutions, there are many possible routes towards a solution that were brought up in, on the May sixth meeting, but I didn't hear any of them like talked about when the counselors were like thinking about ways that the money could be gotten. My personal suggestion would be appropriating at least a six percent budget increase for the school district and its operating budget. And transferring some capital for the purpose of building a solar canopy over the roof, over the parking lot at the high school, which could further contribute to our operating budget in future years. Now, where to get that capital budget? The police cars are only replaced, or the police cars are replaced about approximately three times as often as DPW and fire vehicles. Yet the DPW and fire vehicles are much more specialized than the police vehicles. If one of them breaks, it might be much harder to find another vehicle that would do the job. But when a standard police car breaks.